Start the meeting. It is now 18:33 on Thursday, October 24th, 6:33 PM on Thursday, the 24th. We call regular meeting of the North Whibley Pool Park and Recreation District to order. All Commissioners are present tonight. Commissioner Hoffmeyer will be responsible for the minutes. Their Board Issues. I'll start with Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
Yeah, yeah, can I have a minute?
You may. Commissioner Harden, Board Issues. Commissioner Hall.
No.
Commissioner Shingleton.
Yes. And apologies for not sending this out. This is when you wanted me to bring this up.
Yes.
If we could pass this around. My apologies for not sending this out ahead of time. But what it is, and so I just, I took, I had sent this as an email to Sean, to the Chairman, and so, so just to summarize where we're at is, so the OPMA law states that we need to post meeting notices on our website unless we, unless we don't have one. We have fewer than 10 FTE, which is full-time equivalents, or no one has it as part of their job description. We do have a website, we do have, and for some period of time have had greater than 10 FTE. And then I just kind of added this for, this is for interpretation. The Director of Client Services' description states it works in conjunction with the Director on external communications. So I talked to, because, because we have not been putting, so the, the regular meetings, as long as they have not been altered, are on our website. So those have been on there all year. Not a problem. But any other meetings that we have had have not been posted there, to my knowledge. And so I reached out to, there's, there's these people that work for the Attorney General's Office, and they're really nice and helpful, they want to help you do the right thing. And so I talked to this person who is Assistant Attorney General for Open Government, and she suggested two possibilities. One, that we could determine that the Client Services' position isn't explicitly responsible for updating the website, and so we feel that OPMA was not violated, and discuss how we plan to proceed moving forward. The other option is we can, we could determine based, that based on the job description, our common understanding of the one person who does the website updates, that we did unintentionally violate OPMA. But to correct the violation, we would need to have a meeting where we identified each meeting, and then we have to summarize, so basically we need to have another public meeting where we would summarize the decisions made, not revisit them, but the point of that, meaning we don't have to revote, it's a, you have to go through them in case there's someone from the public who wants to give an opinion testimony, what have you, on one of those. If, you know, if, and when I spoke to her, I was like, you know, to be really honest, most of the time, no one comes to our meetings. So I'm not saying that I think this is a huge risk, but the point is, is that there's a process and there's a law. And, and so we could correct it with one meeting that's, that goes through each one of those that where we violated, unintentionally violated the law, and we could revisit, or, you know, summarize those decisions in case there's anyone in the audience who has something they want to say. And then we would talk about, you know, give them an opportunity to voice concern, and then, of course, with our current situation with our minutes, if any of those meetings do not have the minutes completed, they would need to be completed beforehand so that we would have a record of what decisions were made at that meeting. So, and I realize that's, that's a, that's an us, you, like, extra problem, that's a different problem. And just, that, that's basically the summary of it. When I discussed it with her, just the point, part of the point being that it wasn't like, hey, this is no big deal, it's, hey, you need to determine what you're going to do. She did talk several times about, you know, if you discuss this with your attorney, and, and I, I felt like, I mean, I think part of it would be which direction we decide to go, and then, you know, what that course of action would be. So, I apologize, I know that that's a lot, and I apologize for not sending it sooner, but hopefully we can determine where we're going to place this, either discuss it now or later, I'm not sure what the advice is.
Do we have that PD to review tonight also? The PD for the Client Services?
Yes.
Could we add that to the PD tonight, and saying going forward that is an expectation?
Well, it's a different, it's a different job, actually. It's a, we put it on the Administrative Specialists.
That's who we would, that's who that would...
That would fall under the Administrative Specialists in the future once we hire them.
Right, but I don't know that it's written any more explicitly than our current job descriptions.
But, but we absolutely can.
Okay. Update it to that.
Yeah, make it explicit, since we now know that's an issue. I had no idea that, that that was a thing, that it's like, oh, because we don't specifically ask somebody to do it, but, and so I thought we were totally screwed, but, and isn't it, it won't be, all the regular meetings, those are, so it's just the special meetings we've had.
We've had quite.
And I know we've had, we've had a bunch, but, yeah.
For the comment?
I didn't know we had 10 full-time equivalents.
Equivalents. So, so, two people who work 20 hours a week is one full-time equivalent.
Okay.
Four people that work 10 hours a week each is one full-time equivalent.
Right.
So, so, yeah. So there, there was a threshold that we crossed at some point in time, but not sure when.
Thank you for explaining that, that's good to know, especially for the record that it's not full-time employees, it's an equivalent, so.
Yes. Okay. So should we put this under New Business? Is it New Business?
I think we should.
We'll add that to OPMA Review under New Business.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yes, give me just a second, you're to be patient, I'm only going to read the first two sentences, and then I have somewhere I want to get into. Yes, yes, I will. We, we in the Board received a letter from Rex Corio, our former Director, and it stated, "Sean, now that I've had some time to reflect on the recent Special Board Meeting held this past Friday, October 18th, 2019, I've came to the following conclusion. Your behavior as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners representing NWPPRD was unconscionable, unprofessional, disrespectful, condescending to me, my staff, other Board members, and those in attendance at the meeting. Simply put, reprehensible." The letter goes on, I won't. Rex Corio is a, is a friend of the district, is a friend of me personally, put thousands of hours into bettering this district, and I think he was generally well-intentioned. That does not mean he was perfect, that does not mean he was mistake-free. Sean, I also think that you are a friend of the district. I consider you a personal friend as well, and I think that you are generally well-intentioned, and I think the district is much better for what you have given us. And I, I kind of was vocal with the fact that I don't really think that any of the five of us necessarily handled that special meeting exactly the way we should have. That said, we're all well-intentioned, and we're going to get through this. And there are, there are bigger things in the past that you were a part of, and I might definitely understand why, why you know that this is something that needed, grab the holdout. So, we will, we'll get through this. That's all I have.
Thank you. Did everybody else? Because I have two things. One is, after the OPMA Review, we'll go into Executive Session for less than five minutes. And I did not bring my RCW to tell you which one it was, so, if you have it. Oh, fantastic. It is to go in to review a proposal from our lawyer to represent the district, is basically what it is, so that you can all review it. And we'll find out exactly what paragraph that is.
I don't, I don't think that is one, but...
It's not?
Yeah, I know, it's, if, if there's pending litigation, I'm pretty sure, I mean, let's verify it during the course of this meeting, but I believe that that would still have to be public. I think if there's pending litigation and there's an attorney present, either on the phone or in, or in person, otherwise, it's not, it's not executive session.
Okay, so then we'll keep that, we'll add that to New Business, and not put it under Executive Session.
Yes.
All right? And then the other thing that I have an issue with, and I'll bring up separately and not in during voucher review, is last month, as we were doing voucher review, I think the Board as a whole was shocked to find out that we had cards at Home Depot, charge cards at Home Depot. None of us were aware of it. That is a line of accounting. Every line of accounting we open, that the district uses taxpayer money on, we have to approve. Now normally that's, you know, we catch up on those things pretty quick, but as I pulled the cards, and I'm going to look for the exact number, there's over $5,700 worth of spending on that line of accounting that we didn't know about. So, I personally don't feel very comfortable with a line of accounting out there that we don't know about, and that we're spending close to seven, you know, $6,000 on that separate, pardon me. So I'd like to add that as a fourth, fourth New Business is the Home Depot cards. And line of accounting review.
That's part of that, that one?
Yeah, LOA Reviews and Home Depot Cards. Okay. And the other thing, which is kind of a moot point, but I will bring it up right now, my final Board Issue was unfortunately last Thursday, before our special meeting, we were supposed to have a rough budget, not a, not a firm budget, but a rough idea of what the budget was, so we could start working towards that. That didn't happen, so we know we have three, three weeks, because it's an early, it's due early this week, because, or early this year because of when Thanksgiving is. So we not only have a budget we need to get done in the next month, less than a month, we also have to do, and somebody help me?
Levy certification.
The levy certification, which certifies the 1% raise that we're due this year, is that correct?
The whole thing?
Yeah. So we have two very important pieces of documentation. You've been through this before, so we're going to lean heavily on you to get through this, all right? I know you've already prepared a budget, we're going to need Matt, who's not here tonight, to get us what maintenance budget there is. So please, I'll send an email, and hopefully we can get that, because we're going to need to get that done like yesterday, okay? Any other Board Chain Board Issues?
Is it Board Issues or Agenda Changes?
They kind of morphed into one, so the Board Issues ended up being Agenda Changes. So any other Board Issues? Any other Agenda Changes?
Yeah, I would recommend that we put the Review District Bylaws before we do the Employee Handbook.
So we'll change number five to number one, and then everything concurrently?
Yes.
We're going to move two up?
We'll do one and two, I think, wait on three, you okay with that?
Yeah, of course.
You sure? Okay.
This is because the, the bylaws?
I just, I remember that, yes.
All right?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, just, and what date is the budget due again? I know I have it written somewhere, it's in paper, I just figured since you brought it up, it's all getting fresh.
Yep, the date is...
In our minds.
23rd, maybe?
21st. No, 22nd, I'm sorry, November 22nd. Right, it's due before that Saturday. So, or that Saturday morning at 8 o'clock. So we have to get it done by November 22nd, right? Yeah.
And we have a meeting on the 21st, not that, that our hope would be to, but just saying that, that exists.
So everybody should be prepared, we will probably do a special meeting the second week in November.
Yes.
For the budget, all right? Not that we're setting one, because we're not. But, all right.
Maybe we should.
Would you like to set one now? Has everybody agreed to that?
I think it's a good idea.
What about the 14th? It's Thursday.
I mean, you can.
Nope. How about the 13th? That's, that's not a good night. 12th, anybody for the 12th? I feel like an auctioneer.
That should be fine.
Tuesday, the 12th?
Yeah.
Tuesday, 12th works for me.
Joel? Jenny?
We're going to say 6:00 PM?
We'll do 6:00 PM for the 12th. Can you get off that, bro? Okay. So that'll be a special meeting for the Budget Review. We'll just say Budget. Any other Agenda Changes? No public, Ty, did you want to make public comment, or?
Thanks, sir.
Approval Minutes, we have one set of minutes for Thursday, November the 15th.
There are actually two.
There's two. And for Thursday, August the 22nd.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve the minutes of August 22nd, 29th?
Yes, ma'am.
As, as written.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 22nd, as written?
Six.
No discussion? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we approve the minutes of November 15th, 2018, with a change that I discussed with Commissioner Harden, that she forgot to make this change. It should be voucher numbers 8037 through 8053, so that, delete that, that other thing.
So the change being the district voucher numbers 8037 through 8053?
Yes.
Right? Further discussion?
Well, it has to be seconded first, because that's my...
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. The done file. Thanks. All right, expense vouchers. I missed marking that place. No, you can have it back, sir. Just kind of remember where I was. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve district vouchers 8342 through 8379 in the amount of $20,344.57.
Aye. All right, discussion of the vouchers.
I have to send one to the doctor.
Yes, you may. So while she's, while people are taking a last-minute look, Julie, I've got some confusion on vouchers and how they apply to the PNL, okay? So when I, when I dug into the Home Depot cards, a lot of it was cleaning supplies, along with some tools and equipment, but when I totaled it up, it doesn't match the PNL for cleaning supplies. So where are we putting them? Are we putting them somewhere else, or not? And the reason I bring that up is because we've got cleaning supplies on here, and that's the only reason I'm asking.
So for this one, they should, because what I've been doing is I've been taking off of the statement, itemizes each invoice, and I've been going line by line on the last couple of them. The first pebble, I was kind of taking a bulk look at what it was and putting it into a category, but the last two, I have line by line through the statement invoices and put it to the actual item.
Maybe we'll talk, I, I got 2703 for our actual, not using the Home Depot accounts, just looking at the PNL and what we spent on cleaning supplies, and comparing August to September, there's a $400 difference.
So is it $400 more on the PNL?
I wish it was. Unfortunately, it's $400 less, so I would, yeah.
Let's take a look at it.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I, one question I had, and I don't know if you can answer this, maybe you can, was about the, there it is, the invoice for the Air Gap failed inspection?
I have no idea. Why?
That's fine.
You okay, Pat?
At my age...
That was a balloon, that was a balloon. That was a balloon, so.
That's fine.
Seriously.
It was something to do with the backflow test. I know that, I know the city of O'Carver required us to get something done to it, but I wasn't on track.
Okay, thank you.
I vaguely heard about it, but I don't...
No, that's, that's, that's what I needed to know. Okay, thank you. All right, so we didn't know anything about that.
It happened when I walked in and seen it.
And then the other questions I had were, that, these are not fun things to bring up, but we had a whole bunch of cancellations for birthday parties.
We had one cancellation for our birthday party.
Okay, now, when I looked at the PNL, hold on a second.
Well, there's swim lessons.
Ah, swim school, thank you very much, ladies. See? I knew somebody was behind.
See from the explanations?
Swim, swim school, too.
Patron refund for swim lessons, there was one family that signed up multiple children for Monday, Wednesday lessons, and then realized that they had a commitment Wednesdays and they would never be able to attend the lessons. So that was a $333 refund, I believe. There was another child who absolutely refused to get out of the water, or get in the water, so they ended up opting to just not have lessons. I think he was maybe aquatops age. And then the third one, they were charged on the out-of-district rate when they were actually district residents, so they requested refund of the difference.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just make a note, so some things on our profit and loss, if you look at that, if you look at the to-date, the year-to-date, now there are some numbers that are severely out of whack, and that can come from one of two things, unexpected expenses, right? Things we didn't know about. Or it can come from, well, we accounted for it here, but we really put it here, and, and so I would just ask that as we look at 2020, that everybody, I mean, this is a great basis to use, because some of these numbers, so like shutdown maintenance is 725.9% of budget. It, while the people sitting in this room might understand it, some of them might, some of them don't, from a taxpayer's perspective, that looks extremely irresponsible. We have another one that is, and while this, I know this sounds really silly, but because it's, you know, the budget was $30, and we spent 732, it's still 2,442%. So, I mean, it's, it's really, we need to be mindful of putting things in the right, like, to me, that's something that we knew, we, we didn't really think we were spending $30 on pool supplies. I feel really certain about that. But, but it's just, it's one of those things that from an outside eye, it, it looks really, really bad.
Yep.
And again, there are, there are things that are unexpected, and I think we just have to be prepared to explain those things, but then the other ones, when we're doing the budget, try to, like, where does this really belong? So anyway, that's just my little two cents there, thank you.
I agree with you completely, and I will say that this year has, the last several months has been the most unique set of entries for me, because with the renovation and some of the swim school equipment that Jenny has opted to get to enhance the program, we've been purchasing items that, there is no good place to represent them on the existing PNL the way that it is broken down. So I'll be doing bills, and I'll be like, oh, which one is the most, like, the most closely aligned category to put it in, but it's not as detailed as it should.
But, but, but there are two things to that, and, and I, I mean, if I can, sorry, that's, it's, if we're not doing the recognizing thing, I'm going to go ahead and talk. But two things there, because one of them is that then, then part of that responsibility is to, is to create the right PNL. You know, we've, we've tried to refine it over the years, but it doesn't mean it's perfect. So you, you refine it, instead of just putting it somewhere, or put it there temporarily and say, here's what I'm doing. The other thing was that the activity that's, that was never followed through was the adjustment of our 2019 budget. So that's the other thing that is, you know, if, I, I hope I'm not being too egregious by saying this, but at the end of last year, we said, well, I guess it's close enough, but we're gonna, we're going to modify it, and we never have. And so we have to understand that that, that sort of, that lack of matching these things up is gonna, is going to in some cases end up looking like it doesn't match, and that's, I mean, that's what you get, you know, garbage in, garbage out, in a certain sense, so. Thank you.
Further discussion on voucher review? No further discussion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Possibly get a motion so we can discuss the M&amp;O accounts to payroll.
Oh, Mr. Chair, recommend that we transfer from the M&amp;O account to the payroll account, $45,588.44.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Yes, second.
Second, okay, discussion. So all us first, did we get, I, I didn't see it, and I could have looked right at it and kept on paging. Did we get the payroll report?
So...
No.
I never received the email outlining specifically how you want it laid out, so what I did is I put the quicker payroll report for the two-day periods, and then deposit confirmation from, from where we remit the federal portion. So those are both here, from November, September. Page 30, 31, 33, and, and the staple package.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to be clear, nobody's reached out to me to ask for it?
Okay.
Just, go ahead.
I sent...
It's not, it's not...
Okay, I...
So it's probably in your...
If it was important for this meeting, I mean, I'm, I know that people know my phone number. I have had no calls and no texts. So I, I, I mean, I, I feel like we have to look at what, what is appropriate professional communication.
So we blacked out the names. Did you get that?
So that...
Last month, you gave us a report of who went where, like, guards, everything else. Do we have that in this one also?
I did not put that in this one, because that one, for some reason, the numbers don't match up exactly, and I think it's because of the LNI withholding, because these numbers, like what we do for a payroll transfer is the net pay plus federal and contextual holdings, security, and Medicare. So that's what we do for a payroll transfer, and then the LNI transfers are done when we pay LNI quarterly. So that's a sub-our transfer.
So they still make the LNI withdrawal, but it's not shown until the...
Yeah, we don't transfer it to payroll until we're actually paying LNI.
But what you gave us is worthless to us.
So...
We wanted to, I'm sorry, I know, I know one of the things that I wanted to see was, you know, how much money are we paying the Director? How much money are we paying for lifeguards? How much money are we paying for this and that? And it's like, this is not that. And so you, I know that Commissioner Shingleton had put it all together, and she sent it to Rex, and he apparently did not forward that to you, but it's like, you knew that Commissioner Shingleton had that, so if you would reach out to her, she has it on an email that she can send to you. And, and if you have any questions, ask her.
Things like hours work for each employee?
Perol is what we asked for.
What's that?
Perol.
Perol?
But, but things like overtime as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and I think the problem, the, the issue there is that's transparency for, for the taxpayer. And once again, we wanted to say, we promised this before, you know, in our levy campaign, that we were going to be transparent. That was huge. And I want to do that, so. Further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything said. Hopefully, hope that we can approve these and have it, have it done this way at the next meeting, I would hope. The actual item, one for our new interim Director, if we're able to hire one here.
Further discussion? No further discussion? Just, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't approve this, nobody gets paid, correct?
These monies are already going to pay out. So I think this goes back to the... So, I think this goes back to the conversation that Commissioner Ford had with former directors McHasslin, that this is just a reunion for you guys. I can't remember what the exact verbiage was in that conversation that they had, but I remember there was a big conversation that surrounded that.
So.
Because, yeah, these are payrolls that have already been paid, so I'm not sure what happened.
I still support, hope you're gonna finish me.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All against?
Nay.
I'm an aye, sorry, sticking.
Okay. So, all commissioners voted for, except Commissioner Singleton, never voted nay. Committee reports, do we, I don't, I never got anything back from, oh, good, I'm gonna miss Brad, I did not hear back from Brad, so I think Brad, done. Unfortunately, can I borrow that color purse? Thank you very much. So, I don't have anything to report from Clover Valley, is anybody else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I was looking at, how come we never got any money from the Babe Ruth people for, we paid all this money into Ball Field this year, and then they never paid their rent or whatever it is, did we fail to bill them?
As far as I know, we never had a signed agreement with them. That's something that Rex was supposed to be working on with them, I have never seen a signed agreement.
Because those 1,300 bucks, that we're supposed to get every year from them, and that, in the past, paid for the water and the, you know, the dumpster, what, porta potty, thank you, and it's like, and we didn't have it this year.
How many signed agreements do we currently have with the district? And I know the answer. Zero.
For, for Babe Ruth.
For anybody.
And if you are assigned.
Okay, so we have one.
We have, Cedar Valley is due August of next year.
Okay, two, thank you.
Aren't we signed with the school district?
No, we haven't signed it.
Oh.
We just got it for review tonight.
I think that, I think that's it.
So, we don't have Babe Ruth, we don't have the high school, we don't have InWAC. What are we missing?
We have the physicality group.
I'm sorry?
I'm with the physicality group.
Okay.
And we're still waiting on the drug court.
We, yeah, we wanted to look at that and research that, so, okay, thank you for bringing that up, appreciate it. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, since we're on the Clover Valley thing, so, we probably do want to, though, as part of our budgeting process, reach out to them to get some sort of budget request for 2020.
Yes.
We know that there was a lot done this year, but that would be, you know, this is, this is really how the process should work, is they submit to us a list of things that they would like to do, the board looks at it and says, here's what we're willing to give you, you know, and, and budgets that money for 2020. So, that, that probably needs to take place, but I'd also say, based on this conversation, that somebody should be finding that contract. I know that the day that we visited the Ball Field, it was brought up, that, you know, look for the old one, in terms of, we, you know, we used to have a contract in place with them, so that probably would be a great place to start as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything further for the Clover Valley?
I have a comment on the law.
Sure.
So, I am concerned that the porta potty at the baseball field is unused, inaccessible, and we're paying for it, so that needs to be addressed for you guys.
That was supposed to go. It was still a second.
I haven't been out there in a while.
The second one, we're still paying for, and that's, I forgot, I saw that.
I just saw it for $200 on the.
Yes, which means, and we pay $100 for each one.
So, the one at the dog park needs to stay.
Yes.
But, the one at the baseball field is seasonal.
Should've gone away.
Right, so I think we need to follow up on that, however we.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I haven't been out there.
No.
With a dog injury, whatnot. I do want to say that we appreciate, the dog park does appreciate the support and getting the concrete slab done, and getting that reimbursed, that has helped tremendously a little bit. Once I can get back out there, spend active time out there, we'll continue to approve on the rest of it.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Julie, can you please? Thank you very much.
In the future, and if we have a, hey, my.
Push me. I saw the $200 charge, is that for a year?
No, it's per month.
Per month.
100 each one, per month.
Which is reasonable.
Is it?
I, I mean.
Well, I guess it's.
They put it out there, they stock it with toilet paper and.
And they come out once, twice, for each, depending on the driver's route, but they haven't been able to get it for the baseball.
It's a dirty job, Pat. Is, oh, because it's locked?
I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Would you underbid that, would you?
No.
Community. Ladies.
Sorry.
It's a crappy subject, let's move on. All right. So, committee action board, nothing for this month, we've got too much other stuff to do. All right, so, to, item number one, which is the bylaw review. Bylaws were handed out here.
There, I got it.
Any motion?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I move that we approve of the bylaws that are submitted.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you very much, discussion. First off, I'd like to thank, I'd like to jump in and for everybody that is, and thank Donna Seale again for doing this. Thank you.
Woo!
Further discussion?
Can we just point out, I mean, does it make sense to point out, for, like, for the record, kind of what the, because there were a couple of material changes.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, so, I went in and changed the name, because we had to add pool to the name, I changed our logo to the beautiful one done by Commissioner Singleton.
Thank you.
From the Eagle, it used to be, and I added an Article II in the governing body board composition, only because I thought it should be in our, it should be in our bylaws, how we elect commissioners, and then I, then I found out, it's all set in the RCW, so I just put in there, Section 2.2, Commissioner elections and terms will be in accordance with RCW 36.69 and 43.12.
Thanks.
And that, so that in case anybody else wonders, or that, how do we figure that out? And then, the next change is the duties of the director. So, we added, one, to deal with a diverse range of employees, we added.
Twenty, oh, there it is.
Oh, sorry, and we added Paragraph E, to represent the district to the greater community, including partners, social organizations, and the general public, go out and be visible, to be very clear. And then, change, let's see, in Paragraph J, the, it was to prepare and submit to the board a proposed, we added operating budget and plan for the fiscal year, and to be responsible for administration of the adopted budget. And then, Paragraph Q, the director shall be authorized to sign contracts on behalf of the district with prior Board of Commissioners approval, and it has, it wasn't, the prior approval was not, the Board of Commissioner approval was not in there before. Also, and I, I don't know why P is not in color, but it's not, so P is, is completely new, the director shall not, without board approval, remove greater than 10% from the district reserve fund. And then, sorry, in Paragraph O, the director shall by insurance bond be authorized to expense up to, and if we want to discuss it, up to $30,000 without board approval or signatures. It was 50 previous, and we changed it to 30 when we got an interim, so I would say, if we're gonna have a, a new interim, and then also a new permanent one, I would leave it at 30 until we get used to the new person, or, and then.
Well, that's actually not, the, the 30 was based on anything that's much larger, sorry, I'm just gonna.
Okay.
Anything that's much larger should already be a planned expense, or it's an emergency expense. I mean, you know, meaning that if you're spending that kind of money, the board should already, should either already be aware of it, or the board should be made aware of it. That was, that, that was really the reasoning behind it, is you shouldn't have a 50, $50,000, $45,000 expense without the board's knowledge of it.
Thank you for recapping those. Discussion from any other board members.
Do you care if you miss one executive crossing the line?
Yes.
I do.
Under the Section 4.2, right at the beginning.
Oh, goodness, I missed that one, thank you.
Thank you, Bea.
One extra executive.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the, the one thing, and I'm not trying to undo, I'm, I'm still ready to move forward, but the one thing that I would say, based on just looking at this yet again, because she and I met to review them before, but, is director's contracts. I, I think, I think moving forward, one of the things that we may want to consult with an attorney about is, employment contracts are kind of, they're dated, so, I don't know that that's really, we probably want to get a little bit of advice about that. It's not a bad idea. So, I'm, I'm not asking for a change right now, I just think it might be something that we might want to, and so that's at the, it's in Section 4.1.
The director shall serve under contract, that part?
Um, yes, and there's a couple mentions of contract, but, but the, the concept of employment contracts is, is actually pretty dated, and so, we may just want to get some, a little bit of advice about, about what, I mean, I mean, there's, you can hire someone and they can have responsibilities, but an employment contract is completely different, and it typically is renewable, and, I mean, it's, it's, it's a level of administration that doesn't really exist a whole bunch in the, in the real world anymore. So, it's a dated concept.
Okay.
So, it's worth considering.
So, if they don't have employment contracts, do they have a job description, position description?
Mostly PDs, right, and then in this state, it's at-will state.
Yeah.
And the director works at the will of the board.
Yes.
And all the rest of the employees work at the will of the director. It's kind of pretty straightforward.
I mean, if you know how to, how to word it.
I mean, we, we can't change it right now, right?
No.
Oh, that's right, because we have to.
Right, so, so I would suggest not doing that, I just think it, I think it's a, it's.
Something to look forward.
I hadn't really thought about it before, and it's like, I want to remember with some other nonprofit stuff that I do, they, you know, they kind of laughed, and were like, we're, we're doing away with that process, and that was eight years ago. Seriously.
Okay.
All right.
Well, none of us are experts at this, and that, so that's, we're doing the best we can, and it's like, oh, yeah, that's predated, so, anyway, sorry, thank you.
Further discussion on the bylaws? Commissioner Hart?
I, I don't quite understand the concept of not, I mean, you're saying they don't have any contract, so, they could be, as you say, dismissed at will, so.
Right, hired in.
It would be superfluous to put in a contract, in that case.
Or, and that's why I think the legal part, I mean, I know that's not what we're voting on tonight, right, I just know that, but, but the, the other part is, is we may be artificially constricting, and I don't know, like, I'm just, I'm saying, we might be artificially constricting ourselves by having one.
Right. So, for future discussion, that's a good point. Yes, sir?
I don't know that this is a bylaws thing, maybe it is, I mean, maybe it seems to be a little freewilled, but maybe it fits in there, I mean, yes, it's an at-will state, but hopefully, hopefully the board or the director would, would, even though it's at-will, comprehend what issues are gonna leave you, owing, being an exempted player, what issues will leave you owing somebody unemployment, because that's obviously never a goal.
True.
I don't know if that gets in the, I don't know if that's a bylaws thing or not, but I know it's our goal to not ever, to not ever owe unemployment if at all possible.
True.
I would think it's in the bylaws, but.
I don't understand. To me, it's a, I mean, situationally, you have to make decisions about what's best for, for, for the district, and so, while that would always be the goal, it would probably depend upon the situation, you know what I mean? That's, so, so I think it's, I mean, that's how I see it, is it situational, like, what's the best thing to do here? But, I mean, it's a valid point, though, for sure.
Any further comments?
No, thank you.
All in favor?
Wait, wait, so, I would, I would like to amend my, amend the, oh, wait, who made the motion? I didn't make the motion.
Shame in the motion, yes.
Can you make an amendment to it, to take out that extra executive?
Yes, yes, I amend that we, I amend the original motion, and that we remove the extra executive, and I think it was 4.2.
Yeah, line 4.2, it's just the, the title there, I missed.
Okay.
I second that amendment.
All right. All in favor of passing the amended motion, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
I will make that change and send out to all of you the new bylaws, and I'll send them to you, Julie, so that we have them.
Can you please, somewhere, put in the file, we have a versioning problem in this district, can you just somewhere put a date?
Yes.
And make sure that we have a, you know, the PDF copy is the master, so that it's unchangeable. I, I, while I don't think we necessarily have, have a, have a versions control problem with the bylaws, we know we do with other things.
Yes.
Let's just make sure it's very clear.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Yes. I'll put it down in the footnote on bottom of each page, maybe, or something.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
So, it's approved 24 October 2019 version is the most recent bylaw version.
And someone will get notified to come in and sign, sign the master, a master copy?
Yeah.
Is that accurate, is that what we do?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I changed the names. What? What was the question, sorry?
Do you need a resolution for it?
I don't believe so.
Didn't we take out some verbiage about resolutions as well, by the way?
Yes, because I thought that was, I thought that was, it's like, since a vote is the same, is, to me, is the same as a resolution, why do we do anything by resolution, other than if the county's forcing us to?
Right, in this case, we just, we needed two-thirds, and we have it, so.
So, we can discuss.
Does anyone mind if we, I have a clean copy at the next meeting.
That'd be fine, yes.
At the, the budget meeting, so I will do that.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, moving on to Employee Handbook, Part D, Part Two.
Okay, so, the, the first, let's look at the administrative assistant first, and then we'll go to the others, if that's okay, because it's, administrative assistant was one-pager, got it?
But, that's, these can't be, this, it was, it was supposed to be specialist, remember?
Shoot.
Yeah, so, and then, they're still, on this one, there's still the words department head, so, I'm sorry, I hate being that dude.
No, 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 I apologize, okay.
These all say department.
I did not make the changes then to that one correctly, or I have the wrong copy.
Right, but all of these say department head on still, and we took that out, right?
Yeah, I thought I.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Oh, shoot. Mer. Okay, I, all right, yep. Great, great.
The bane of our hostess.
Shoot. Yeah. Okay, I have a wrong copy then somehow, and I thought I had made the correct stuff.
Because this also still has, I'm, I'm not just trying to, I'm not just trying to beat down.
No, no, no.
But, like, this has Director of Finance and Administration, and that's a drop that we determined was going away.
Yes.
So, this is not, this is not the right file.
So, we're gonna pop, we're gonna pop this till next month, then? Yeah, I have to find the right copy and make sure, I, I was having problems with my computer, I will admit that.
Okay, so, we will.
Sorry?
No, no, no. We will move that till next month, when we have time to discuss.
All right.
And interim director. Mr. Chair. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, before I do, everybody in this room cares deeply about this pool, I think there's one person in this room that has cared deeply about this pool for a few decades, and we have a little bit of a mess going on, and I think we have one place to turn. I move that we appoint Pete Stevens as interim director of the North Smithville Pool Park Recreation District.
Second.
Thank you, discussion. Pete, thanks for coming tonight, thanks for volunteering to jump into the fray, should you so be elected, could you do me a favor and tell me a little bit about yourself, please, for the record?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, for inviting me, I guess I've been a district employee for 25 years, and before that, I was in the Navy for 24 years, and I did hold positions of leadership, management, and at least one in the major operational command, and one in a major shore command, and so, I think I have enough corporate memory around here, and enough knowledge in the cobwebs back here from 24 years ago, to handle the things you discussed with me yesterday, is the main measure would be on my plate if, if I was selected to be the director for the interim period of time. And of course, I don't know if it's appropriate now, but what we discussed is that you already have a number of people that are good candidates to possibly be hired permanently, so we're anticipating possibly by sometime shortly before Christmas, six weeks from now, I don't need to be the interim director, but of course, I did assure them that if that didn't come true, that I wasn't going to, you know, just run out the back door, we'd have to figure something out to continue for a while. But it's definitely anticipated by me for the short term, to take care of a number of things that you identified to me, and hopefully, you guys are hiring somebody through this time. And then, any questions that you have, that would be up to you guys.
Questions from the board?
Thank you. You know, thank you for being willing to step in, really appreciate it.
No, I think, you know, it's, again, I don't know how, I don't, I have never considered myself an exceptionally loyal person to anything, you know, my school, my college, my whatever, but I feel like after 25 years here, if I can't step up for a couple of months and do this, then there's something wrong with me, so, I'm happy to do it.
Commissioner Hart, did you have something?
Well, I'm just, you're willing to face all the issues that we have right now.
And I have them for 25 years, and I've heard a lot of them over 25 years, but now, I think I am aware of most of them, just if not before the final discussions, and I think that's something we can handle.
I just want to personally thank you, your integrity and leadership is above reproach, and right now, we need that, and we need somebody that's, that can be fair and level-headed, and I appreciate that. I'll say that you and I can continue to split a lane for lap swim, as long as you continue to swim slower than me, despite our proximity in age.
Hopefully, you'll all be feeling the same thing six weeks from now. You know, in the Navy, they used to say, you always get promoted one pass below of confidence, never really know that you weren't going to be competent at the next job until they bring you up, so...
You weren't supposed to say that. No. Yes, transparency, I like it. All right, further discussion on the motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We would need to follow through with things like spend authorization, as well as making him the district auditor, if in fact, that's what our intention was to do.
So, we would need a motion to remove Rex Coriol as having spend authorization and as the auditor, and a motion to approve Pete Stevens as such. Can I get a motion for that?
And as you write that stuff down, you probably...
Oh, I've got it, thank you for the correction. We have a motion on the table, so, I'm sorry, Pete.
You should probably write somewhere my real name, Ira.
Yes, sir. So, all in favor of the motion on the table of approving Pete Stevens as interim director, signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Any other further motions for the interim director?
I don't know how to, I don't know how to word it, so...
Mr. Chair, I move what you just said about removing Rex Coriol as the auditor and his spend authority, and putting it in Ira Stevens' name.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion.
If we can just make sure, know quickly whether there's anything missing, so that we can, we could add to our, we could add as soon as possible, so that we can fix it. I mean, we understand what our intent is, but if we have something missing, it's going to be an issue.
I think this is what you and I discussed, Julie and I discussed before the meeting, as far as removing the former interim director and approving him. Once we do this, and we get these minutes approved, which we may have to have a special meeting next week, just to get these minutes approved, so that we can actually get it to the bank and get the spend authority done.
And you'll need the resolutions for county.
Okay, so, yes...
I just, I would recommend, and just, in order to speed this process up, that someone take time tonight to take this chunk of the minutes for the bank and get it written up, and sign it here all week tonight, so that you can move forward tomorrow, or as I know...
We have to have the whole, whole minutes approved, so we'd have to write up everything, so unfortunately, that has to be done quickly. If we can, matter of fact, does everybody have time while we're here? Oops. I know it's Halloween week, does everybody have time Monday for a five-minute meeting, Monday at 6:00?
So, everyone?
To improve the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay?
I can do it.
Thank you. Shane? Thank you, sir. 6:00 still working?
Is that the 28th?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
1800, we'll have a special meeting on Monday, the 28th, at 1800, can you please put out the minute and notice?
And we would need a resolution to sign it, too, right? That's what I was going to say, do you want to get a resolution?
Yes, please. And you have a resolution?
I'll get it, right?
Thank you.
What was it, it was remove Rex Coriol and add Ira Stevens?
Yes, sir.
As spending authority?
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, further discussion on that?
So, just make sure that the minutes get uploaded, so...
As quickly as possible, so we can listen for the exact wording on certain things.
Do you have time to do that this weekend, interview you today? Of course. Okay, thank you so much.
Audit Officer Serge Millering?
Yes, sir. All right, Pete, congratulations, thanks for jumping in and the fray.
Okay, you're welcome. Do you need to put in there, in the minutes about, did you agree that there would be 25 hours to meet?
So, we mentioned, yes, we do, actually, we need to, we need to talk about what you and I discussed. So, when Rex and I talked before we closed this all up, we talked about timelines and how much he was going to be here, and one of the things we thought was appropriate with the... Did I say Rex?
You did, you did.
Pete, I'm sorry, Pete. And what Pete was going to do each week was between 20 to 25 hours, he mentioned, we mentioned core business hours, and the idea he came up with that worked for both, I think, him and the district, was, what were those core business hours again? It was from...
Well, again, I would preface it by saying, I will do what is best for the time, and figure it out, but, and I can work with the team, as long as it's best for me to be here. But I pictured possibly a few hours most weekday mornings, and I would actually write it down, so it wouldn't be at a very time, so it would say 9 to 10, 9 to 11, Monday through Friday, and then may say 1400 to 1600, Monday through Friday, and of course, there could be one exception, because it's kind of come along pretty quickly, like, one day next week, I might have to not be here one day during the year, but I may try to figure out how to solve that problem, etc., or someday, if I can, but, and then, other than that, I could be here, you know, whatever, if I did it better, if I'm working on paperwork that only I can work on, maybe I need to be here at times where there's not that many people getting into it, or, but if it's otherwise, I just thought about a few hours in the morning break, a few hours in the afternoon, depending on what day are to where it would come out, somewhere between 20 and 25 hours a night.
Thank you. And then, yeah, I was about to do that real quick.
More than the kayak problem of...
Hold on, more than the kayak problem of...
What was I saying?
Huh?
What was I saying?
You can make it.
I want to talk, what we need to talk about is... So, I move that we pay the interim director $26 an hour.
$26 an hour, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. $26 an hour, okay? I think that's what we talked about.
That's all.
So, and the big three things for the record, I asked that, there's an investigation that I would like you to conduct, the board would like you to conduct, not just Sean.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. The board would like you to conduct, we can give you the details of those, that, and then the budget is the other big thing, work with the staff to develop the budget, Julie's going to be your go-to with that, Commissioner Singleton can also answer a lot of questions, so, actually, any of the board members can answer questions on that, on the budget?
Okay.
Okay? And then the levy paperwork is the other big thing.
That's, and I have some notes from the other side.
Okay.
And then, just the normal day-to-day.
Yes, sir.
Pretty much.
Cool.
Can you repeat that, you said investigation, I missed that, investigation of what?
Into a personnel matter in the district, you're welcome.
And there was maybe some hiring?
So, things like...
And I'm not trying to bring it up with you.
No, and it was, well, the administrative assistant, but we have to redo the PDs, so, probably not.
Okay.
Put the administrative assistant PD on the special meeting that we have, and we can, I can have the clean one, it'll take five minutes to look at it.
Can we do that next?
The job, the job rec is already open.
Oh, the job's already open?
Right, we were just, we were solidifying the job description, as well as changing the name.
Yeah.
And, so, I mean, the job, the job rec is already open, but the, and the, the expectation was that since it's a person who's going to partially also work for the board, that someone from the board would participate in that interview process also, that's what we agreed to before, anyway.
Anybody from the board want to volunteer to work with the new interim director to, there you go. All right.
Chopping it up.
All right, interim director, we're done there. Clover Valley Proposal Review, we didn't hear anything back from Brad, found out some new information tonight, so that's a pass. Budget review, we've already mentioned this before, we are going to have to have a special meeting for the budget, we'll get some time for the new interim director and the staff to put something together, along with the assistance from the board, on what we've done in the past, that's the only thing we can do, is guide from the past, so, because we don't develop the budget improvement, so... All right, review district, up, we moved that, so, hiring new director, so, says it was just mentioned by the new interim, he has limited time before he needs to depart, so unfortunately, we will need to speed up the process, so I would turn this part of the presentation over to Commissioner Singleton.
Right, so what I did was, so, just to recap, what we decided to do was to post the job rec on Indeed, and, and when, you know, Sean called and said, you know, that the advice is that we move up this process, so, we had had, our expectation was to leave the job requisition open until November 15th, it is still open, but what I have done, so, just in the event that somebody applies and we don't find the right person, we're not stopping things, right? But, so what I did was I pulled all of the applicants to date, there are nine of them, and, and so what I did is I put together packets, well, first, actually, if you could, let me see, is mine in here, or not? Commander, what did I do? I don't know, okay, we'll do that, I don't see mine, Commander, where's mine?
Can you share with that?
I know, I will, because I'm like, I've got it somewhere.
Oh, there's, oh, no, there's not.
Yeah, I know there's not.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I see it, thanks. So, what I, what I did was just tried to straw-man a process, we can certainly talk about that right now, it was, I was trying to put something together, based on what we've done before, as well as what we've learned before, hopefully, and so, just a couple of highlights here, I put down the RCW, just so that we understand that this application information is exempt from public inspection, and so, just that, you know, in the past, we've always been like, honestly throwing names around left and right, and I would actually prefer that we don't do that initially, it certainly doesn't mean that information won't become public, or candidates won't become public at some point, but, so, in here, I just wrote that I'm suggesting that we refer to applicant, applicants, excuse me, by the phonetic alphabet, yep, I know, but I had to come up with something, and I wasn't going to go with names of flowers.
Some mean alpha, bravo.
Indeed.
Okay.
And so, I added that to the reference paperwork that is in these packets, so, so each person is referred to in that manner, the other thing that it gets us out of trouble with is assuming, one, a gender, or two, how to pronounce someone's name, because I don't, like, I can't remember specific instances, but we did a really bad job in the past, meaning it was well-intentioned, while, you know, that certainly isn't a, it was just a, it was an accidental transgression, but anyway, so, the proposed, I just kind of put down first round, review the resumes, and then there were some questions on Indeed that they could answer when, when they submitted the application, and so there's some answers to those things, including, you know, things like cover letters, so there's, there's two pieces of information involved, and then I just included a score sheet, and so what we would do is each individually read the information and score each one of those candidates from 1 to 5, based on what we see on paper, right? We can't really get to a different level of, well, you know, in this or versus that, but score them from 1 to 5, turn in the score sheets into the pool, and there's an extra little envelope in here, so you can put it in there, seal it, bring it to the pool, I would come get them, you'll get it back, but I'll come get them and just, and make us a matrix, so that everybody can see everything, and kind of where people average out at. And then, I also threw on here, just because I know sometimes we're not the best at this, but, meaning, this isn't our job, right? I mean, it's, that I'm saying, I'll do online searches for candidates, just to see what comes up, everyone else can do their own, I'm just saying, I'll do it for all nine of them, feel free to do that yourself as well, and, and so then, we would meet, so then we would meet back and talk about, you know, here's, here's what this, what's in our matrix of how everybody scored, here's what we found out, have discussion as needed to narrow the list and determine who we think that we're moving on to the next step with. I assumed, I just made assumption that the second round would be audio or video conferencing, just because that's what we did last time, and then, and then, again, we would have score sheet, we would have, you know, set questions and score sheets, so that everyone would have the exact same experience, I'm not going to get too much into that right now, because we got to get through the first one first, and then the third round would be face-to-face interviews, meeting the staff touring the facilities, and then meeting the, depending on the timing, the commissioners-elect or candidates as well, so, is, again, I know it's a lot, it's been a lot to actually try to put this together real quickly, too.
First off, thank you very, very much for putting this together.
Sure.
So, discussion, board?
I think this is good.
Shane, have a look.
Yes, Shane, thank you.
I mean, when the advice came from legal about speeding the process up, I'm assuming that they probably thought it might be harder for us to find an interim than we did, so, in the last meeting, when we said we would leave it open to November 15th, I still wonder if that wouldn't be the best, of course, I would hate to, I would hate to, I would hate to pick somebody and then have somebody better come forward, and like, well, I was going to apply for it, whether they were or not, and then immediately, it's conceivable that the, that the new director could start doing it first with four votes of opposition against them, in theory, with the composition, the board changing, etc.
Right.
I, I just, I'm kind of soft on it, but I wonder if we shouldn't stick to our original close date as all, now that we have an interim?
So, as I said, the job rec remains open, so if anyone still wants to apply for it, they can, and, and we as a board would have to determine at, at a certain point, how we would want to handle that, if, you know, like, do we consider these additional candidates, do we, you know, what do we do, if, should there be any additional ones? The, I think the case generally tends to be that... The, I think the case generally tends to be that the longer, and I'm not saying that there wouldn't be good applicants. I'm not saying that. I think generally with these things, they tend to, the longer they sit out there, kind of like a real estate listing, right? That it gets a little, it gets a little tired. But that's, I mean, maybe that was just them trying to give you to spend more money. I don't know, right? It's entirely possible, but...
I would say, my other thing to think of is that I don't think the interim director wants to stay around quite that long. So, and I think right now what we need is some stability going forward. And since we are including the commissioners-elect or candidates, once again, depending on what time that falls into, because the election... It will, well, there'll be, well, we'll know whether or not they're the elect or candidates, we can't, you know, so...
Well, depending, because, right, the election won't be certified until whatever, you know, like the 21st-ish or...
Twenty-fifth, I believe, twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, this last Tuesday in the month, so it's the twenty-sixth.
Here's my thought on that.
Yes.
One of the, my first day as a commissioner, we got handed the new swim coach's contract. I knew nothing about the coach, the contract, what should be in here. I just had to go with the majority. I was not informed. Wendy and I have been sitting on this board for four years. I think we're better informed than just about anybody else on what a good director would be for this place. And not leaving that in the hands of the poor newbies, handing them, "Here's this ESAC pick." I think it's our responsibility to try and leave the best person in place that we find.
I think you're right.
So...
But I do like the idea of including...
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we all agree across the board, yeah.
Obviously, they don't have a vote, but they do have opinions.
Yes. And they'll have to work with them in the future, which is important.
Yeah.
So, and I think that meet the commissioner, meet the commissioners-elect and the candidates-elect, and get to elicit feedback from them is always worthwhile. So, okay. So looking at timelines, so due dates for, due dates for current resume review.
And scoring, yes.
And scoring will be when? So, next meeting.
And that's just a matter of turning it in. That's not the meeting, that's turning it in.
Right, just turn in the mail.
Yeah.
Can we all get that done by Friday the first?
Wow, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and the, there we go, see? As intended, okay, great, sorry.
Do you want it by close of business on the first?
Yes, close of business on the first.
And turning them in here, in the envelope.
Yep, and on each one of the envelopes in here, I just, I wrote my name on it so that they were put in.
So we'll just go into your folder?
Exactly, yep.
And then you'll tabulate those?
Yep, and then I'll have, not only will you get yours, your original back, but you'll, then we'll each get the summary sheet.
So if we do that on the first, when's that special meeting we talked about again? Remind me?
The twelfth. That's the budget meeting.
Okay.
Is it going to be a big meeting?
I don't think I want to wait for the twelfth.
Yeah, no.
I think we do a meeting on the fourth.
This is the audio or video conference?
Yes. Better start writing these down, my wife's going to kill me.
No, remember, that'll be the meet to review the results and determine how many, and then we'll move on to the next step.
Right, that's November the fourth.
Oh, so...
Monday, November 4th at...
Let's do eighteen hundred, uh, 6:00 PM, please.
All right, and that would be here?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, just making sure.
Exactly, exactly, over, is that...
No, no, because we will...
Actually, part of it would be, yeah, absolutely.
Part of it would be because we're voting, yes.
Well, the voting part is public.
Voting's public, thank you.
Discussion and scoring cannot be public.
That's correct. Twelfth. We did say November 12th for that budget meeting?
Yes. And then, and then make a motion for the results.
And then we have to do the motion in public, right?
Exactly, yep.
Yeah, just clear.
All right, so we got that. Second round.
We'll probably need, it probably will be candidate-dependent, right? I mean, to a certain extent.
Okay, so we'll wait to set the second round. We'll also set the second round on November the fourth.
Okay, yep.
Will you be scheduled, trying to set it to schedule at that point?
That's what I'm talking about. We'll set the schedule, the date on November the fourth.
Oh. We will set another date.
Right.
Great.
Like you said, part of that will be dependent on what the feedback is from them. First off, thank you very much, Wendy, for doing this. Thank you.
Yes, right, exactly.
I'm going to leave that shut. All right. Any further on the hiring process? Any further comments? All right, we're moving on. Next is contract considerations. We have one contract to consider tonight, and it's already been signed. We haven't changed, we didn't change the bylaws prior to this, so it's already been signed by the director. It requires a signature from the board. We haven't had a chance to review this. I haven't even had a chance to review it.
We did...
Is that the one I looked at?
Oh, it's different.
It's, well, that's the one he looked at, but it doesn't have the changes in it.
What changes?
There were just a few of the wording. It was sent off before I had a chance to do any of the changes.
Do you have those changes? I don't, I don't...
I do, I have it in my, on my computer. Do you want me to open it?
Yeah, just to see, because I can't remember what I...
It was just some wording, and then we added in that it's lockers. We would have to, it would be, or the P, because we, there was like something weird, remember, with the lockers?
With the high school locker?
Yeah, no, so the high school, there was wording in it that stated that the lockers could be used with collateral, but you wanted it to say what the NWA contract says.
Yeah.
Where it hives per policy.
Yes, okay.
So, we added that, and then there were some changes with, like, I was more done with the numbers. So, I took out a couple of them.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, but everything else is, is okay, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
But also, to be clear, we never stated that there needed to be a board member's signature. We said that there needed to be board member review and approval. So, that sounds like, well, had already taken place, but unfortunately, it's not reflected in the contract. So, I guess, what it would do... I mean, because for all intents and purposes, it's an executed contract.
It is an executed contract. It's already done. All right, it's done. Really, I'll pass that around for the board to look at. So, the other contracts, Jenny, since you're here, I know you were working on all of these. Let's all say, the NWA contract.
Yes.
The school district and NWA need to be the same.
Right, which they...
Similar.
They currently are.
Okay.
There was only like one, there was a couple of things. NWA is arguing that they can't afford the seventeen dollars per lane hour. But Donna Sue and I had talked, and that's non-negotiable, as well as the hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for swimmies.
So what were they asking?
They want to go to like, he said, at most, they can afford thirteen per lane hour.
So...
But my suggestion is that they don't use three lanes. And they don't, at most, they use maybe two. So we cut back their lane usage at the same cost.
Which is what the high school did.
Yes.
Yes, that's what the high school did, isn't it?
Right, that's exactly what we did. So we cut back the lane usage, and then as they grow, we can renegotiate, renegotiate and add more lanes.
Okay.
So, right now, at most, I believe, they only use maybe one to two lanes at most. They're claiming that they're going to grow, however, I have, I have not heard the numbers have grown too much. So, that's where I'm going to come back and say, "Okay, so if you can't afford for three lanes, seventeen an hour, we need to cut back."
So one thing that also isn't in this contract, thank you ma'am, did you want to review the show?
Yes.
Thank you. Pat, you did look at it.
Chair?
I just...
So, what's that, sir?
Go kids.
Yeah. So the other thing, the other thing... Um, no, it's all good. That contract doesn't address the timing system at all.
Right, that was something that Rex asked me to take out of the contract.
Okay, so it's out completely.
It's out completely. They did not say a word about it when we met.
So has NWA said anything about the timing system?
And we were...
Nobody has said anything.
Well, the old contracts used to say that we were responsible for it.
No, and that was the thing that we talked about, and so I made sure that the contracts, we took it out.
We did.
Because Rex heard you say that.
Okay, good.
He took it out.
So I know there was discussion about going forward due to the price of it, that they need to use it.
Right.
It's part of competitive swimming.
Right.
Which we understand.
Right.
But there's been no proposals or counter-proposals made?
No, no, not since, not since we met last. Now, I need to send him the updated version of it. I haven't sent it to him yet. But, I mean, he reviewed it originally when I sent the first one, and it was taken out then as well. But he did send me information on like repairs, because it's a Colorado timing system. So, some of the stuff that you have to get for the timing system has to come from Colorado timing, so it comes from the state of Colorado.
Yes.
So some of those are specialty items. So I haven't looked at it yet, because I was waiting until we had a chance to discuss how he, as the district, was going to move forward to repair certain parts of it that were needed repair.
Okay.
We were going to infer that, or if it was something that we were going to split? Or what your thoughts were?
And that was something, we talked about that, you and I did. And so, it's kind of like, so, if the parts cost a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars, are we okay with buying those parts and keeping that going? And that was my understanding, that I think we're good with paying, eking out a little bit. We just don't have twenty-five thousand dollars to buy a new system.
Right.
Right.
And so, do we, do we want to come up with a consensus of the board of what's the amount that we're not willing to go over on the timing system?
Give me a number, I will...
We don't even have an estimate, though, what they're costing. So I would suggest that, can we ask for an estimate before, before we make a motion on that? Because I think that, you know, and maybe we can, even for the estimate, because if it's over a couple hundred bucks, then maybe we go back to both parties that need it and say, "This is what it's going to cost to repair it. How does the board feel about going forward? How does their boards feel about?" Because that's going to take some maneuvering. So if we could get some quotes, actually, the single quote, unfortunately, hits the sole source. Okay, thank you.
I actually got the links from the website, too.
Okay. Awesome. Any other contracts? We talked about those three. Do we have any more information on the contract you brought us last month?
The drug...
Yes, ma'am.
Drug, okay, so it's for the families. It's not for, I have to think of how to explain it to you that it's not confusing, because I interviewed it a couple of times.
Thank you.
So it's for the families, for the youth, it's for the youth court. So those people that have gone through the system, their families get through, like, the court pays for them to come and use the facility. So we're not giving them something for free necessarily, but the court system is providing a service to the families, and then they pay us directly. It's for their rehabilitation, basically. Like, they're looking to rehabilitate into the community, so they're looking for places to bring their families and their kids and things like that.
Thank you.
So it's actually a good thing. It's not, it's not like a work release or anything. It's literally, they just want a place to bring their kids.
And it is, it is a good thing. However, the price that they were quoting, the two dollars and ninety cents, that goes back like ten years, when the price for the ten purse, ten punch card was twenty-nine dollars. It's not twenty-nine, what's the, what's the ten punch pass cost now?
It's like four something.
Yeah, so it should, they should be paying what the military is paying per person to come. And as long as they pay that same price, I don't have a problem with that.
So Julie and I had kind of talked about this, and what we were concerned with is the open swim pricing and the lap swim pricing doesn't match up. And a lot of these families come in generally for open swim. So we were talking about giving in, giving them the price of the, for disabilities.
Correct.
The youth senior disabled BM, lap swim prices, three dollars and forty cents per visit on a punch card, so...
And how long would they have that for?
It's just per visit. They would come and they'd have a letter or some, however they work it out.
They would give us a roster, and these people would give us, kind of like how the military checks in. So we would have a roster so that it doesn't look like, you know...
Right, no, no, you don't get it.
Protect their privacy or whatever. So we'd have a list of these people that have this service. They would check in with us with an ID, you would check them off, and then submit it to the court, and they would reimburse us.
And it's not a big number of people?
No.
Is what, in the past, it hasn't been?
Idea of what the number is?
She didn't really say, and I didn't ask, but I can ask her. Once they, our total reimbursement the last year we were open was less than two hundred dollars.
So, that's basis, you know?
It's something, do you have experience with this, Chris?
Well, I just, I have experience with recovery, and just to comment in general, anytime, this is more of a service to our community and helping these individuals and their families reestablish healthy, sober options instead of the other, is by far tenfold down the road, right? Because they later become our lifeguards, their kids do, right? They later become participants in our society, in our community, and civic, and other, other areas, because that's part of that recovery process. So anytime we can go out of our way to help that and bridge that gap in our community, and lessen the stigmatism of recovery and illness, we're doing a huge favor.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, 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 don't apologize. Thank you. It's well said, so thank you. All right? Any comments from the board about the contract?
I'm in favor. I mean, I think it's a good thing for the same reasons that have been, so...
Please proceed with that.
Yeah, and my only problem with it had been the amount we were charging them, because otherwise, it's pretty spoiler play.
And she was, I thought I mentioned that to her, she was like, okay, that, you know, when I quoted the four, whatever it was, 425 or 450, they didn't even skip a beat. So, I, but I would feel better about being in mind with the disability.
Yeah, let's use the disability, that way we can link up the supplement that we already have.
And a disability.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you. Is there any other contracts out there?
Um, so the other thing that I am a little bit concerned about is the PT people that come in on Wednesdays.
Okay.
Um, there are differing stories as to what is going on with them. Um, the last time that I spoke to Rex about this, it was a verbal agreement between them that they wanted the entire pool from, on Wednesdays from 9:00 to 11:00. Um, they only take maybe two to three lanes, if that, um, and they're only paying $150 a month, is what we're getting from them. So I have a swim school at the same time as them, but I think we should, because we don't have anything in writing with them, and they're only taking a portion, I want to use two lanes, two or three lanes for lap swim, and not close for lap swim. Because I, I mean, we have people that are coming in all the time, and we have to turn them away, because that's what we were told to do. So I started letting people in yesterday. I didn't get, they didn't say anything, he didn't say anything, so...
I assume a change, though. I'll leave this up to you guys, I'm a lap swimmer, so I need to keep my mouth shut.
No, I agree, and I, I won't, I have my own pool, so I don't come swim here anymore, but it's like, no.
It doesn't matter.
Then you have a rag party and partying down at Suz's house. So, yeah, no, I agree. I think they, you know, they don't need to have the whole pool, and they're not paying for the whole pool. So absolutely, we should have it available for other people.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that they're now storing various supplies, like, if you go look in my office, there's stuff underneath my desk, and it's just kind of taking up space. I don't mind keeping it here, however...
What's it for?
It's like their equipment for what they do with locations. Like, we have a spin bike that they put in the water sometimes that is stored on the deck, um, things like that. And I just feel like we should have something in writing that we're not responsible if something gets damaged, because they leave it here, and it's not locked.
Can you, does the board, is the board object to her going forward with a contract with some of that written up?
I think that's a really good idea. Have we ever had a contract with them?
I don't, we did. We had a written agreement with them, and I actually spoke with them yesterday, and I was told that they had a current agreement with us. I asked her to please provide me a copy if they did, because that was never provided to me. And when I had asked Rex about it, he had said, oh, we probably need to get that. So I don't know where that breakdown in communication with it is, but we have a template that we can modify to, to that length.
Can you go ahead and do that? Thank you very much. Is there anything else we need to do?
Uh, that I'm aware of?
Okay. Thank you.
Could we perhaps tell them that they could buy a cabinet of a certain si, you know, we tell them the size?
Absolutely, yes.
And they can...
Range.
You know, because there, there's room on the wall.
That's what, ideally, that's what I would prefer, because I don't like to be in my office, because there's so much stuff in there.
Please put it in there. I think you have the commissioner's support on that one. Thank you, Commissioner Harden.
And I think that if they have a lock on it, we need to have a key...
Yes.
In the, wherever you keep keys, like, yes.
Yes, so should I put that, like, I'll add that wording into the contract when I write it up?
Yes, please.
That they need to provide, like, a lock, and we'll come up with dimensions. They don't have that much stuff, if it can fit in, like, that tub with the...
That's the volleyball.
I know, but your tub, but it wouldn't take your tub. But something like that, just because, I mean, some of the stuff they have is kind of expensive, and that will wait for something to happen. And then, you know, because we don't have anything in writing that says that we're not responsible, we're still paying for it.
Absolutely.
So...
All right. Excellent. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Contracts? All right, good. Maintenance review plan, uh, maintenance guy's not here, I know he didn't work on one with the former interim director. That's going to be part, obviously, of the upcoming budget, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, could we make sure that he gets a copy of the current maintenance plan, knowing that it's out of, we know that it's out of date?
Yes.
But, and it doesn't mean, like, given where we're at, I mean, I understand maybe that, that, that right now, the whole plan doesn't get updated, maybe it just gets cherry-picked for this is what's going to be needed next year, do you know what I mean? And then it, and then it gets a good, I mean, because part of it is like, I mean, we could pick a million things that could, that need to be worked on right now. There's simply not enough time, and there's not enough resources. So if we, if we kind of cherry-picked with the help of people who know what's going to be needed next year, um, you know...
Can you help with that question?
That, I mean, that to me would be sufficient, is if we identify those, like, these, we think these are next years, and, and then be able to validate, you know, either validate the numbers that are there, or change them to what we think is more appropriate.
I mean, we know that, we know that 25% of extras might just possibly be the roof.
Yeah.
Huge part of it. We, we probably need an estimate stat.
So Pete, when you do this, your go-to person's going to be Commissioner Hoffmeyer? Yes, definitely. And then your backup go-to person is going to be Commissioner Harden, because she's the direct link to the other guy who knows what's going on.
And I have my own opinions also.
Yes, ma'am, you do. I do not, I do not mean that in any way, shape, or form.
No, I know.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for, no, thank you.
When did that happen? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
All right. Operational plan? I, I know you and some of the staff are working on operational plans.
Well, it's, in terms of, so we brought this up in a previous meeting, in terms of building the budget, part of that is, instead of, so, you know, we've, in the past, taken a top-down approach to the budget, which is like, well, this number was 20,000, and, and we exceeded, you know, whatever, whatever, so, yeah, we'll just make it that. And there's really no, like, here's the math. And so the idea is, and so what Jenny and I are planning to do, and I think we were planning to meet next week, um, because, again, other things have, have kind of, you know, we, we wanted to see where we were at, like, time-wise, but is build it from the ground up. So we think we're doing this many swim school sessions, and that takes this effort, we're going to be open this many hours, we're going to do this many things, and so try to build it from a framework. I mean, and I realize that, like, if anybody's going like, duh, totally fine, because it is what actually makes sense, it's just not how we've done things. And so we're trying to take a different approach at it, so that, so that by also building it that way, part of what we're saying is, is we're telling the public what our intentions are, right? So we plan to have four sessions of swim school, we plan to be open this many hours, or do this thing, that's, and so that's really the basis for an operational plan, right? That's, so that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. Um, and so we were planning to meet on that next week, and, and so, I mean, we can certainly spread that around.
Yeah, we have already pulled the preliminary numbers of, kind of like, what I'm projecting for the rest of this year, and then going into next year. And as far as, like, the scheduling, like, the full schedule and how that goes.
Awesome.
So...
Questions?
No, I mean, we already talked a little bit about that.
We did.
Awesome. All right. Any other comments from the board on the unfinished business? Cool, moving on. Schedule review. Okay, quick thing here, and I'll head it up before anybody else has a chance to hop on this. So remembering the past, we, we love the fact that we're being proactive and not reactive when it comes to the schedule, but remember, the schedule needs to be approved by the board, that's one of the few things we do. So I noticed that we sent out the new schedule, and as far as holiday closures and stuff.
Which I added, so that was, it's on page 40.
I thought it would, I thought it said for approval, though.
Did it say for our approval?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I didn't see that.
Oh, it said that on the Facebook page?
But the holiday schedule, literally, was something that Rex had made out, whatever it was last week. I actually was not aware of those hours that he had, and I saw that he had discussed it.
All right, so the, the one we put out, put out before the board saw it was erroneous.
Because what, I gave you three options for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I don't have numbers, like, what are we, sorry. Can we stop for a second?
Yep.
Because we're not, we're not all on the same page, like, literally, not at all.
What page are we supposed to be on?
Where, there are no numbers.
At the bottom.
No.
No, I don't...
Here, I think it says numbers.
I think it's a stable packet.
My number, not at all.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, that's how my... Yeah. We have nothing...
Just make sure it was the right page.
We have no, we have no numbers.
You're on the right page and the wrong end.
Okay. Pat and I...
We can share if we try.
As a proposal, like...
All right, now we got the proposal for holiday schedule. Thank you. Can you explain? We're on page 40.
So I gave you three options for Thanksgiving, just based on, oh, the, the way they did it before.
So Wednesday, we close at 1:00.
Which I think we should.
Thursday, yeah, I agree. Thursday, closed all day, and then three options for Friday.
Yeah. What I would like to do is open regular hours on Friday.
You know what? A lot of people...
Go shopping.
Well, actually, I think it's a good thing to do, because you got, Turkey Day, right, the day after Thanksgiving's, we now, you have the 5Ks are out, everybody, thank goodness, is getting healthy.
This place is going to be packed that morning for open swim, I mean, lap swim, sorry.
Yeah?
Yeah, I could work off that turkey.
You'll like it.
I won't wear it.
I'll swim for you, brother.
I just don't see why we would close down operations the day after Thanksgiving. I mean, it's not a holiday.
Discussions from the staff on that one?
I think that makes sense.
From the board, pardon me?
I like it.
Okay.
Chair?
Yeah, I, I like the plan, I hope we have enough staff to lure somebody to the day after Christmas shop that can do it.
Christmas.
Christmas shop the day after. So if anybody wants to block Friday?
It's not a holiday.
Well, it's not a holiday.
I know, I know.
But that's not the point. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the only time I ever struggle with finding staff is the morning shift, and I'll be here and do it, so...
Awesome. Cool. All right, moving on to Christmas.
No, are you kidding me? I hate crowds, and I hate shopping.
Close Christmas at 1:00 PM, just like we did on Thanksgiving, close Christmas Day, and regular hours the day after Christmas. Okay? New Year's?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't be, so in previous years, and, and, I'm just going to wait, sorry, because I don't want to, um, so in previous years, we've closed down more days, um, and based on, based on low usage, um, and so part of it was, it was presented to us as a cost savings measure, um, which, I mean, you know, if, if there aren't going to be people here, if we think that that's a, that could be the case, that might be a wise thing for us to have more, more days closed.
For Christmas?
Around Christmas, correct. Yeah, so we've, we've done it, you know, I, I, I don't recall exactly, but it was, it was basically presented to us as if we're open, here's how much we're going to spend, and here's how many people we're expecting, and it was, if we're closed, here's how much we save in the process, so...
That was when Steve had gone through, and we had pulled numbers from previous years, where we had stayed open until noon the day prior to the holidays, and he had had, Jelena and I looked at the numbers for the day prior and the day after, and that's where he made the determination that it would save money to close, I think, the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day, the day after, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the day after Christmas.
Why, is there anything wrong, does anybody object to being open, and if we don't have the numbers, uh, numbers that you find appropriate by noon, then going ahead and shutting down for the rest of the day?
Well, I don't, I, I think if we say we're going to be open, we need to be open, right? It's not, it's not, I mean, so it's, we either say we're going to be open, or we say we're going to be closed, right? Because it's, it's not like, well, I'm going to run in and grab this thing off of a shelf, you know, in the morning, because they might be closed, right? I mean, it's...
It's true.
Um, so, I, you know, I'm, I'm open to whatever, I just am trying to be a little cost-conscious.
So didn't the numbers indicate that the day after Christmas, people didn't come for a swim?
I don't remember day after Christmas, I remember day after Thanksgiving was pretty low, and that's why he had decided it was a good idea to close, but I don't remember about day after Christmas.
I want to bring my question.
And day after Christmas was...
Okay. Why aren't we...
But they're such old numbers, and our patron base is not what it was a few years ago.
That's gone. Then maybe we should be open the day after and see, and if nobody shows up, make that a note for next year.
Right. I like that.
That's kind of what I was thinking, my, my other thought is to, like, we, in previous, like, before the original closure, they were saying that the whole, I mean, lap swim numbers were not great. We have great morning, I mean, the 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, 8 to, 8 to, like, 11:00 is kind of slow, but, I mean, we're pretty steady, more of these lanes are pretty full, so I think it's different now, like, we're running a different...
That's fair. It's fine.
So we've got to approve this, so...
I like the plan on paper for Christmas.
Yep.
Do we need a motion, or do, can we just, I mean, it's, it's, it's already been published this way, right?
Do we want to talk about... No, this is not, this has been, this has been approved.
It was, yeah, this has got some changes to it.
Yeah, okay.
So we also want, there were other possible modifications, opening later on Sunday, 11:00 AM, rather than 7:30? Is that because no one's coming?
No, wait, I literally paid two guards to make it maybe one or two trickle in.
On Sunday?
So, and, no, and I did the research, and there isn't any pool in the area that opens that early on a Sunday, everybody opens on 11:00. Yeah, we, I have on my staff members, full Sunday numbers for the month of September, and that full morning clock from 6:00 to 10:00, that Friday had 10 people come in that clock for that three-hour period.
So can you just walk us through the rest of them, then?
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, let's do it.
Can you just, so, so, do you want me to go through all of it?
If you would, yeah, just, yeah. So we also were looking at, we do a Wednesday open swim, and we're considering canceling that, because we, I, we did pull some numbers, and we're averaging maybe 20 people for that Wednesday open swim, so closing early on Wednesday after swim school's over, and just having that be some hours that we can kind of eliminate from the schedule a little bit to help, um, I think it'll, one, take some of the pressure off of staff. Um, we've hired a bunch of new people, however, the staff that we currently have are starting to feel a little bit of the stress of the craziness of summer and going into fall, so that will help with that a little bit. And just because, you know, we're, I scheduled five to six guards, and we're sending people home left and right, so, and that's kind of a waste of time, too, to, like, drive over here, because some of them live in Coopville, and so I just was thinking, at, at least until maybe after, maybe we headed to spring, and then look to bring it back, um, for those winter months. Because it's hard, I mean, people have kids, they don't lock their kids out till 9:00 at night to make open swim. So that was kind of my thought with that, and then, um...
The PT part you just talked about, you can open up lap swims on Wednesday, right?
What?
You can open up lap swims on Wednesday during the PT works.
Yes, I would like to keep lap swim going, because it's so, I mean, we're starting to get really busy with lap swim, so, which is really kind of cool to see, like, today, I need two to three people per lane today, and we haven't seen that, so that's encouraging. Um, and then December 6th is a non-school day for O'Harbor School District, so we were looking, we'd do a special open swim if I can get the staff for it, and run like a craft table for the kids, something like that, where they could do, like, and then, you know, send it out to the chamber and something like that. And then the 14th, bring Santa, and do Santa pictures.
I think I, if somebody can give them a ride.
We charge extra, like, for craft stuff and...
So we haven't talked about that yet, but I would think, yes, we probably do like that.
It would be as a specialty, then, sort of, happening, I think, yeah.
Cool. And the swim school plan?
So swim school, I'm going to cut back in the month of November to two instructors on Mondays and Wednesdays evening. So the high school boys, they have moved their start time for swim meets to four p.m. start time. So I can't run swim school on Tuesday and Thursday, cause it just, the overlap is not on the work. Um, and I have hired some new instructors, but I need time to train them. So I'm taking a couple of people out of the water who are burnt out. And we're gonna run two instructors for the month of November. And I'd like to take December off to give us a chance to reevaluate, look at what's working, what's not working, and then allow time for more trainings for staff, if we can do that.
I think that's, I mean, I think that's, it sounds wise. Um, but, so my question would just be, you know, how would we determine what alternate, where there's space, what alternate programming would happen, right? And that's, I, I know you and I have had the conversation before about, you know, optimization, like space optimi-, you know, I mean, like, right?
Yeah.
Efficient, to be as efficient as possible.
Right, so it's open, we have lap swim going at the same time, we would just open up additional laps and swim lanes.
Okay.
Um, and we could, instead of like not having an evening lap swim, we could open for December, the month of December, we're gonna do this time spot is gonna be lap swim. Cause we don't currently have an evening lap swim time spot on Wednesday, I don't think. So we could open that up in December of like, hey, for the month of December, this is what we're doing. Um, and that would help.
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the holiday schedule proposal from the Aquatics Director, including option one for, um, Friday, 11:29, and all the other things that she discussed.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. Discussion?
Um, it's, I don't, I mean, I guess... Oh, so we're including the whole page?
Yes.
And we're calling that holiday schedule proposal?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, holiday schedule proposal plus possible modifications to the schedule.
I think she wrote it to be pronounced "schedule," so that's totally wrong.
Alright, so, we gotta send you a second to change, thank you very much. Further discussion from anybody besides Commissioner Singleton?
Don't give me that.
Alright, to include Commissioner Singleton, thank you. Alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. Alright, executives, uh, lawyers in front. Okay, so, uh, this last week, went to see, um, wait, OPMA review was first. What's that?
OPMA review.
Still on new business.
OPMA review, I'm on, no, I'm on new business, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just gets number two.
Oh, I had, I, I get my two and three mixed up, I apologize, I had a different one as... So the OPMA review, so, Open Public Meeting Act that Commissioner Singleton brought up. Then put it away.
Uh, no, I gave you, it's right here, it's right here.
Okay, thank you. So the Open Public Meeting Act.
It's right here.
Discussion. I believe that, uh, we talked about this a little bit tonight, um, that we weren't as explicitly responsible with including updating the website, I believe option one is where we're at, uh, more than option two. So, um... Yeah?
I, I have a question, what is the standard for considering it posted? Because every special meeting agenda has been posted on September. There's never been one that hasn't been posted. So, I'm wondering what the standard is. They've been posted in the same manner since before I took over posting them.
So we posted everything to...
Yes, there's been no change to how they're posted. So that's, I'm, I'm genuinely confused about what's wrong.
And I guess I am too, because the last couple of special meetings we've had, I couldn't, and, and I know that I sent you, uh, I was probably, I, we, I, I don't know if I texted you or we called, but I was like, it's not on there. And, and that, that's not, I, I'm not talking about tonight, cause that's a regular meeting. But it was like, I can't, if it's on, if it's on there, I can't find it. And so, and I actually know the setup of our website. And so, if I can't find it, I'm not sure how someone else would, um, because I explicitly looked.
So they're under agendas, and when you open that agenda, it'll say special meeting agenda. And those are always posted there.
Okay.
Alright, so it was posted.
I, I guess, I mean, it, sure.
Can we make it more clear?
I can, yes.
Okay, so how can we make that more clear so somebody knows that there's a meeting?
I can, we can add a line section.
Okay, can we, can we do that?
And that's what we, that is what we used to do. Because we used to have it on the very front page, there were updates, and it would say that there's a meeting at, like, so it would be things that are upcoming. Um, and...
Yes, on the old website, yes.
So can we do that on the new website?
Right.
So that we...
I should be able to put something similar.
Okay, cause transparency is really important, once again.
Well, the, the problem, I mean, and I sent Rex a, a message about this, um, more than once, but part of it is, you know, you, you need to have things that are above the fold, so that people can see them. And currently, you have to scroll three or four screens worth. So right now, we have this enormous letter on our homepage. And what I, I had asked was, put a link to the letter saying, here's an update about this, and someone could click on it and go to that. But unfortunately, so one has to, even if there's stuff down there, people can't see it. And so, I mean, we can say, we met the, the letter of the law, I guess. Um, not, I mean, if you ask me, not, not very well. I mean, truly, I looked and I couldn't find the stuff.
So going forward, we need to do a better job, main letter, the whole... And if there's questions, can you ask Commissioner Singleton or myself, and we'll come in and help you.
I'm just out of curiosity, what's the, the, the law state on timeframe for special meetings? Two to four days?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
Yes, sir. It's a good question.
No, I didn't ask this.
Great question. No, it is a very good question.
And are we doing our due justice to email that out to the list?
Yes, we have a list, yes.
Yeah, but apparently there's a, there's a, there's a glitch, because I don't get any of them to my personal email.
I just started.
I used to, I, see, I used to get all of them, and in the past three months, I haven't received any.
You don't get them again this time?
I never get any of them.
Someone's punishing you.
Yeah, seriously. No, it, it happened once about three years ago, and then it happened once again, and now I don't get any of them, at all.
So, and the glitch is, and I actually, um, talked to our IT people about, people about it, and they said that we could open it to Google Microsoft. When I use the desktop version of Outlook, it's one distribution list. But if I don't have access to that and I have to go in through Office 365, for some reason, the distribution list isn't near correctly.
Right, and, and that's, and, and I, and I know that, but the point is that it still doesn't actually fix the problem. Because as a, as a private citizen, I requested to receive this information, and I'm not getting it. Um, and, and so that's, I mean, you know, I, I know that I've, I've stated other reasons, but that's part of the thing, is I was added to that list before I became a commissioner. Um, and so, I, it is something that I look for, which is why I had concerns about whether we were advertising things properly, because that's also, to me, an indication that it went out to the public.
Is there a way we can script those lists, that's the front desk or something, or you don't have somebody do it, please? Okay, we need to do that sooner than later, please. Okay, further comments on OPMA? Alright. So this, uh, last week, uh, I went and had a discussion with, um, our lawyers for personnel manner, matter, pardon me. And, um, what I did get from Skinner, uh, Mr. Skinner's office was... Somewhere in a small amount of paperwork that I have. Not a, not a retainer, but in a, an agreement, so that they will act as our lawyers here on out. Pass this around for everybody to look at, there was no way to electronically copy it. I, I signed on behalf of the board, he said if we need to make changes or we don't wanna do it. I said, cause I told him, I said, I can't, without taking this to the board, I cannot act alone, cause I am but one member of five. So, uh, we did it for the matter that we were there with, he's willing to keep going on this if we all agree to it. So I can pass this around now, and we can vote on it next month, he's willing to wait a month. That way we have a month to think about it, pass per board policy, informal board policy. What I'll do is, do we have a scanner, Julie? So what we'll do is, I'll scan this and send it to you, so we don't have to sit here and look at it tonight. Hourly rate, and that was the big thing, is for, it depends which lawyer's doing the review.
There it is, $3.50 per hour.
$3.50 per hour for Mr. Skinner and for Mr. Mike Waller. And for, um, Mr. Jeff Waller, it's $2.95.
Awesome. Well, this goes back to, this goes back to probably three years ago of recommendation from CIAW was that maybe we should, I don't wanna throw shade at anybody else, but that maybe we should look around Chris's and Waller, both are as good as they get, so, I like it.
So I will, uh, scan that, we'll, we'll ask Julie to scan that, we'll send that out to everybody to review, and we can actually talk about it next month. Alright? Alright, um, Home Depot Cards LOA review. So Home Depot Cards, I already mentioned that, uh, I kinda, I gotta burn my hide about that, um, cause it's a line of accounting that the board was unaware of. Big deal, especially when you look at the three months of account activity, um, which I did. It kinda concerned me. This is all three months, and they came up, Julia, these came up in one month, they're all together here, Shane, it's a package. Yeah, no, the, yeah. So, um, it was close to $5,700.03. And we know, um, we need to move money out of reserves, and yet, we, we had a line of accounting that the board was not aware of. Are there any other lines of accounting out there that we're not aware of?
So this one, just full disclosure, Rex opened this, I want to say, in April or May.
So this...
So we've been paying it ongoing, it's been showing up on the bachelor reports, um, the whole time. Um, I did not know you guys were unaware of it. I believe he also set up an account with General Williams during renovation period. That's the only other one I'm aware of.
You know what, with that one's off in renovation, whatever month that is.
Okay, thank you.
I can't believe we haven't seen it happen.
So, any line of accounting, we're gonna need the full statements in the packets, because that's, we talked again about transparency to the taxpayer. They need to know where we're spending money. And like I mentioned to you earlier, when, when I reviewed, these two things came to mind. I did see a bunch of tools in here. And, um, and twice all this, I never had that aha moment. I know, um, at work, we have minor property tags and so on, um, but, uh, there's some district, this is district, you know, equipment. So, we need to account for all the district equipment, and then find a way to track serial number, manufacturer number, all that stuff. Um, plus, we should be doing that anyway, because I'm pretty sure most of the tools come from Home Depot, they're like my tools at home, they've got a warranty. And so we should be putting in for the warranty, too, especially if it's a Home Depot. So, you know, um, you know, there's a, there looks like there's a sprayer on there, a 3,400 PSI sprayer. Um, there's some saws, and, I mean, some drills, a hammer drill, drill bits, there's a whole bunch of stuff in here. So we need to make sure that we, we account for all that, and that we track it somewhere. Um, so that would be a good thing.
And, and that's part of the current job descriptions, I mean, that's in there, is asset tracking.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's not something that, it's not something that this district has overlooked. It's accounted for in our handbook.
And it just wasn't getting done?
I'm correct, I, I don't think it's being done.
Okay.
So there's little blue stickers, we used to have on my, I haven't seen them for a while. Like, a lot of my old boats have stickers on them.
Really?
Sticker inside with...
So, let's get little blue stickers with numbers on them and put them on there and do an asset, and it would be interesting to know where the old...
Right, but we should have an existing asset listing somewhere. Cause that was, that was Joanne's, it was in Joanne's job description.
There's an ancient binder somewhere that has...
Right, and it should be done, it should be being done at least twice a year, if not quarterly. I mean, just accounting for assets.
Yeah.
At some level. I mean, you know, if you think about it, warehouses do wall-to-wall inventories at least once a year, and that includes every piece and part. We, we need to have it on a schedule.
Any further discussion on that? Alright, staff reports. Page 36, 35. Jenny, anything from Aquatics?
No, it's basically just the same, I guess, I'm kind of learning like where to ask for staff. Getting six people certified, hopefully ease off of some of my other staff that have been working a lot. And then swim school, which we already discussed.
Julie, anything from the admin quarter?
I did get all of the meeting recordings uploaded, um, through 9:30.
Awesome, thank you.
That, and I listened to the beginning of the 9:30 meeting where you guys were discussing with Rex, and the explanation he was giving did not match what I had explained to him. So I, I put a little note in here that transitioning to a new computer, I had to figure out the software that I can do it, and it's a little bit different than the old software was, so it was a bit of a process, but we're good to go now. It actually goes fairly quickly once I have learned all the nuts and bolts of how to do it with the new equipment. And I can do it all from my computer, so that's much simplified. Um, I did get it set up for bulk SMS texting, um, we've been able to utilize that a handful of times now. So I can do that from an app on my phone, wherever I'm at. If something happens and we need to close unexpectedly, we can get that notice out. Um, so that paired with the other methods of communication, hopefully recovering all of our bases and we can communicate with people as quickly as possible when the need arises. And then, I think here also, EST finally granted us a penalty waiver for some interest and penalties from before Joanne left. I submitted for that, I believe, June or July after she left last year, and they just recently came back and said, yes, we approve of that. I think that it's been discussed in previous meetings, that EST, uh, it's kinda confusing because we take quarterly, and we're a reversible employer, which most of, most businesses are not reversible employers like we are. So even, they don't know what to do sometimes when we call them like questions on things. So there's always this, this back and forth of penalties and waivers and whatnot that we will have to deal with. Both PRRs are now closed, so I don't have anything open on that front. I think that song is a long, I'm afraid to find we're getting anything, and I don't think so.
Alright. Um, any questions or comments from the board on the maintenance report from Mr. Deal?
Have, uh, have we resolved the, um, Clover Valley, sorry if I've missed this somewhere, but the Clover Valley water issue, has that been resolved? Does anyone know?
Not as far as I've heard.
What's that?
Not as far as I've heard. It doesn't mean it hasn't, but nobody's said it has.
Is anyone, who, who would be the, who, who's the owner of that issue?
I thought it was the maintenance guy.
Yeah.
That guy.
Something, something broke and we, our bill went up considerably.
The water ran for about, from what I heard, the water ran for almost a week.
Is it not running now?
No, it was fixed by Scott Fleming voluntarily, I think.
Oh.
To be hon, or my, maybe, maybe they paid, we paid that a bit, but it was fixed. I mean, that was August when that happened, right?
So...
I believe, so one of the valves broke, and they had to go in and replace the valves. The water got shut off, and then they came out and fixed it. Cause it watering was on a timing, but I believe it's been fixed.
Okay.
These increased bills have been since then, at least one of them?
Can, can we check with, can you check with Matt? Please, and see what's up with Clover Valley with the water issue, please?
Is there a measurement of usage, or is our usage gone now?
Yeah, it was, it was like ridiculous, yeah.
For September, or, or...
I think it would've been August, cause it was, it was the September meeting, so it would've been the August bill.
But our next one that, that I just paid that isn't on here yet was high.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Okay, so maybe it did get fixed. No, you said it was high.
No, we're not high yet.
So we, we, it's, we need to consider it an open, open issue until, until we...
They used to be $44, and one of the recent ones was between $500 and $600.
Well, that one would've been when the water, the line broke and it ran for two days.
I, I think we just wanna be sure that we have follow-up to ensure that the problem is fixed, so that we can go back to normal. And then, the thing that was discussed in a previous board meeting was that we should, we should reach out and see if there is any forgiveness, um, to, uh, credit our account. And, and so, all of those things taking place.
Which I think Matt explained we could do once the problem is fixed, I remember.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but the...
Yeah, I think that basically we might talk to Brad about that one, cause I know that they have somebody else that fixed it. I talked to a guy.
Okay.
And that would've been in August.
Do you have Brad's phone number to give to him? I've got it at home, so, alright, thank you. Further questions from the maintenance, from Matt? Okay. Final board comments, Commissioner Hoffmann?
Not tonight.
Commissioner Singleton?
Um, I actually do, only cause I realized there was stuff that I didn't know were fit in the agenda. So I'm not trying to get us to make decisions, I just wanna, like, first of all, so, so one of the things, so I know that you'll have, I, I brought it, so may as well pass it out. One of the things that, um, that we had, that Donna Sue and I, when we talked about the employee handbook, was, um, an updated org, org chart. And so, what I wanted to do was put it out to folks, and there are stars where there are new positions, and that haven't been, you know, that are, that you haven't seen descriptions for. Cause part of what I wanted to do was put it in front of everybody. We talked about what those descriptions would be to a certain extent. But since we're not gonna make any decisions here tonight anyway, nor would we have about these, um, just wanted to throw that kinda out in front of you, so just so everybody, I'm not trying to be mysterious. Um, we put, um, a, uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go from right to left. Um, we, we created a position for a recreation program manager. We certainly wouldn't be hiring for that, but the, it's the expectation that we'll need someone to manage recreation programs. Um, and then recreation instructors, I didn't really, you know, I didn't put the star there, I should've. A, a marketing and communications specialist, um, so someone to, um, you know, to advertise for us, someone to, you know, run, um, you know, to help run things like our social media, basically our public presence. And then also an office administrator. So, one of the things that we've been talking about in, in previous, uh, meetings is, is the, is the outsourcing, you know, so we're, we're, and I believe we're moving forward, but with the outsourcing of some functions. So there's, there's kind of a mishmash of things that we would still need someone to validate the information. We would still need someone to act as an intermediary. We would still, like, we would need someone to kind of be an office catch-all, so it's kind of an office manager position in a certain way. And, and so that's, and so created that as well. So just, and again, I'm not, look at it, think about it, um, what, uh, what the plan, my original plan was to talk about it, but I realized we're in final board comments, um, and I'm not making it very short. But, um, but the idea would be to, to also send out those job descriptions for everybody to look at as well. That's one thing. And then the other one that I, I cannot let go, I just can't, um, so I'm not going to, is, well, actually, just one of them, is, um, one of the things that I had been looking at and was gonna propose for next year, but I want to look at and send to everybody for this year, is, um, purchasing some bo, let's call it box, um, but training for our employees. And so, and again, I was trying to figure out where it fit, and then I was like, it doesn't, what do I do? It's okay. And so, effectively, it would be, um, we don't have a learning management system, nor do we really have a curriculum. we really have a curriculum outside of the professional curriculum for folks who are in the water. And so there is, there is a company, and I can forward everybody the messages that I've received, effectively, for 50 people, it would cost us for the first year about $2,000. They have 65 training classes that include things like, you know, anti-harassment, diversity inclusion, even things like customer service, things like business skills. Let me get back to my, so the areas that they have topics in would be HR compliance, customer service, leadership, health and safety, and business skills. And these would be things that employees would do on a computer. They're interactive. I did an extended, I did kind of an extended trial with one of them, and, and I can forward that to everybody to do. But that $2,000 would, would cover 50 employees. We could always add more if we needed to, for $24.44 a person, not to be exact, but that would be one year. And then the previous, the following years would be that $24.44 per person, and they could take any and all of these courses. So we, so the idea is, what you would do is prescribe per job role, like, every employee takes these, and you take, and you define the timeframe, but then you say, well, you know, okay, so how about these people take this, and these people take this, and/or, so, I mean, you want to give ones that you say you mandate, but then the other component to that is, okay, but if you want to take any of the other ones, then you can go ahead and do that for the same price. Now, you could just do the HR portion, which is about 19 and something per person, or you can buy the whole thing for basically $25 a person. It's something that I think we're actually, like, we're doing the best we can, but I personally think we're severely lacking this. I think it, for a very small amount of money, would improve the level of performance here. It would improve people's understandings of the do's and don'ts. And it also gives people a common language, so that, you know, that they've seen the same experience, they have the same language when it comes to all kinds of topics. So I will send that out to you. I'm not going to lie, I was really hoping to, like, get moving on it tonight, but I